Anyone recording the meeting for the public? Then we will call Mr. Boyer.
Mrs. Renza.
Here.
Mr. Hershey.
Here.
Mrs. Coon.
Here.
Mrs. Mathiely.
Here.
Mrs. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Pottinger. Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Waxler. Six in attendance.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our This is Her's. Upcoming meetings, we have a committee as a whole meeting on November 6th at 4:45 here. We have a school board business meeting, November 13th at 6 o'clock here. An executive session was held on October 13th for legal and personnel items. The board will hold an executive session following this meeting for legal and personnel items. We'll move on to our student representative report. Is it Adeline or Adeline and Grant? Welcome.
Thank you. So in our clubs and activities, students at the junior, senior high school celebrated the Spirit Week with a week of fun events. School spirit assemblies, hallway decorating, the Powder Pop Ultimate 50 Match, and the Homecoming Dance were highlights of the week. Senior Sabrina Phan was recognized as this year's homecoming queen and senior Joe Snyder was crowned homecoming king. Congratulations to all the members of the Homecoming Corps for 2023. And thank you to the high school student council advisor, Mr. Craig, and teacher, Ms. Tierney, for their work in organizing the special events during Spirit Week. The high school drama club presented the Fall Thing this past Saturday. Congratulations to the students and faculty members involved in this successful performance. The Spanish club celebrated its Hispanic Heritage Month at an event by singing karaoke, dancing, and sharing traditional snacks. Students enjoyed learning more about Hispanic culture. The Minithon Club is well underway with fundraising efforts. They hosted a gold-doubt of the football game this past weekend and are eager to continue planning events in support of our Minithon fundraiser. And students from many clubs and activities volunteered to keep a hold of this past weekend, providing a fun event for our community.
In terms of athletics, the regular season is ending for many fall sports. Congratulations to our teams for their successful seasons. We wish them the best of luck during postseason. Specifically, though, congratulations to Lily Chen, who is the girls' tennis Flight Two champion, David Giles, the individual boys' cross-country county champion, and our varsity girls' soccer team's quarterly county champions. During Spirit Week, seniors on the football team began a new tradition called My Jersey, Your Impact. These students chose a teacher who impacted them during their high school career and gave them their jersey to wear for Jersey Tech. This was a special way to recognize this group of student leaders and dedicated faculty members. In terms of academics, two students, Asher Botman and Ian Martinez Arroyo, won individual champions in the 2023 FFA Oldie Fair Floral Competition. Asher earned second place recognition in the holiday theme arrangement, and Ian earned first place in an arrangement incorporating a stuffed bear. Seniors Rini Harris and Ben Thrush applied their learning in Mr. Miller's robotics three class by making a plaque for Coach Wolfram. Our students skillfully combined their creative and technological expertise in photo editing, carefully enhancing the image for precision laser engraving it onto the plaque. Students in grades 10 and 11 took the PSAT last week. This test is structured the same as SAT and provides students with a practice opportunity for SAT. Additionally, this is the qualifying test for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Current seniors Maggie Lentz, Sophie Lentz, and Rini Harris are the National Merit Commended Scholars this year. This is an outstanding academic accomplishment. Students in Physical Science and Principles of Electricity with Mrs. Knauer attended an electricity demonstration with First Energy on Friday. This was a great curricular extension opportunity for students.
Thank you, guys. Give us two seconds and tell us about you, what grade you're in, and what's your pathway.
I'm Adeline Constantino. I'm a junior. I'm involved with a lot of clubs, specifically Student Council. I'm also like part of the Drama Club and Minithon and...
Yeah, my name is Brett Sobolski. I'm also on Student Council with Adeline. I'm also involved in Minithon. I'm the vice president of French Club, and I'm also on cross-country and volleyball.
Perfect. Well, thank you for being with us. So the way it goes is you're welcome to stay, but it gets a little boring and a little weird while most people leave. So thank you for coming to the meeting.
Thank you.
Riazan reports. You see IU, Mrs. Taylor?
Thank you.
The board met Thursday, October 19th. Some highlights, there were 150 participants in the Keeping Kids Safe Symposium. Say that fast five times. And the IU hosted a Common in Service Day on October 9th, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day, formerly Indigenous Peoples' Day, and had over 1,800 educators across Burke County participating in job-specific, student-specific programming. So that was really phenomenal. The other big thing I shared with Mr. Scoboria and Mr. Boyer, sorry, is some updates in federal legislation. The Department of Agriculture adjusted their final rules for free meal access, lowering the percentage of families that meet poverty limits and also waiving the application form. So Mr. Boyer is looking into if that applies to us and how and what all of that means. They also did raise their reimbursements to schools for both lunch and breakfast in the event we don't qualify for the free meal lunch program. So hopefully we'll see some benefit to that. And our next meeting is November. I don't need the exact date. Thank you, Jill. Mr. Pottinger's not here. Burke's EIT, Mr. Boyer.
Thank you. We met on September 28th at 6:00 PM. Everything is looking good so far. Our income tax is up 3%. Overall, all tax collections up 3.69%. They are, just an update on the delinquent EITs, seven more charges were filed as far as employers within accounting, not just within liability, about being delinquent on their EIT. I think the total now is up to 14. There's already seven on payment plans to pay that delinquent tax which is owed, which is great. So seven more have been filed, so no more in the future on how that is going to turn out. There's new elections for officers in December, and our next meeting, they are open to the public, but they are on Zoom. If anyone's interested, it's December 14th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. I'm seeing the Area Education Foundation, Mrs. Coon.
Yeah, we met last Monday, and Kevin Miller started his trip as the new board president for WAVE. We did approve two grants that will take place at the high school level. One is an electric vehicle, so students in STEM classes will be involved in constructing the electric vehicle, which can then be deconstructed, and then each year students can reconstruct the vehicle. It will also have a 3D camera, which was a former WAVE grant, that can be attached to the vehicle so they can do 3D mapping of the school grounds, the community, all kinds of different projects. So that was really neat. And then we also approved a grant for a greenhouse, which will be located outside of Dr. Liskey's classroom. And so engineering students are actually going to construct it, and then biology students can use it for experiments, composting, acid raining, things like that. And then it will also be for students in 7th, 8th grade STEM who can go there and study. I think they work primarily on like life cycles of plants and other organisms. So both grants are actually great because it affects different kids in different grades and also studying different topics. So that's pretty much the gist of what happened.
Good, thank you. PTA, Mrs. Phillips?
Thank you. PTA, we hosted our biggest fundraiser on October 6th, that is the Walk With Wireover at the Hills, and they raised $34,630. So yeah, they did an amazing job. I don't have anything else to really report, other than our next meeting is November 8th at 7:00 PM at the Hills.
Thank you. We'll move to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? Then we will move on to routine approvals. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following: September 18, 2023 Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes, Treasurer's Report for the month of September 2023, Payment of Bills for the month of September 2023 as listed in the financial packet. Do I have motion? Second. Discussion. Can proceed by voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Mr. Scoboria, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Tonight, we're pleased to have three updates that are important for the board and the community here. And the first one, just to let you know, tonight we're spotlighting, showcasing an item at the Hills. But we hope to, at the next couple of meetings, also have, you know, a rec item and then a junior, senior high school item. So similar to past years, we would sometimes be able to bring teachers or students to highlight something that's exciting. So before I turn it over to our two teachers tonight, I want to say this is a really neat item. I was able to kind of view it early when it was midstream, and you pointed out to me very nicely, hey, you know, this is heading to the students. So you probably saw it on Facebook and social media. It was hard to miss with the exposure, but really neat project that brought the school together. So we invited Kristin Heiss-Allright and Andrea Berger here tonight to share a little bit about what they did and how the project worked at the school. So thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your hard work, and we're excited to hear some more about it.
Well, I'm not sure to stand or sit, but I might go between the two. I'm really thrilled to be here to talk about the project. The project that we're talking about really is the one that Kristin pulled together, and it's just amazingly beautiful. But I wanted to start by talking a little bit about the book at the center of it. So the book at the center is this tiny, little, simple-looking book called The Dot. It's only 32 pages, but what I say to the kiddos is don't let the simple look of it fool you. There's a very powerful message inside here. So I wanted to share a little bit with you about the message in the story. So thank you. So the main character in this book is that little girl named Vashti, and at the start of the story, she's sitting in art class, and she's got a totally blank piece of paper. And at the end of art class, she still has a totally blank piece of paper. And her teacher comes over to ask her, you know, what's going on? Why haven't you drawn? And she says, well, I just can't draw. And her teacher says, well, sure you can. And Vashti just says, no, I really can't. And her teacher says, well, just make a mark. Go ahead and try it. So Vashti makes that mark on her paper, and her teacher celebrates it as she should be, as a breakthrough for her. And she has her assignment. And the next day, when Vashti went back for her next art class, she walks in and she sees that the dot is framed on the wall in a frame of swirly gold. And she starts to get confidence from seeing that. And so she decides, well, if I can do that one dot, I can do more dots. And so we follow her character as she gets more and more confident, and as she grows with her confidence, her art grows and blooms along with her. And so you can see, it just gets more and more elaborate. And at the end of the book, she, they have a school art show, and Vashti has now created so much artwork that there's a whole wall devoted to her art. And this little guy down there, the one in the bottom left-hand corner, he's just in awe of her art. And he comes in, and he says to her, I just love her art. I wish I could draw like you can. And Vashti says, well, sure you can. He says, me? I can't even draw a straight line with a ruler. And then she pulls out that piece of paper, and she says, just make a mark. Go ahead and try it. And so it's a lovely story. That's basically where it ends, but the messages are, there's so many in there. It's about self-confidence and creativity and kindness and sharing and collaboration. It's all these wonderful like surface messages. And I do a lot with those things on the first day when I read the book to the kiddos. But my favorite thing about this book is the deeper theme. And the deeper theme is the importance for each and every one of us to figure out what mark we want to make on the world, and then having the confidence to go ahead and try it. So that's perfect for the library. I love that because all throughout the year, then, it's the perfect spot for the kids to explore their own creativity, their own unique sets of skills. And what better place to do that than with our 15,000 books that we have in the library? We refer back to it all throughout the years. We do lots of activities, and so they can find out a little bit more about their interests, and then it makes it sort of more simple when they're actually searching for books. You know, it's a directed search, and it's a more meaningful process for them. So I think this book is perfect for the library, and it always makes a mark on my entire year and on the kiddos. But this year is unique. This year is the 20th year anniversary of The Dot, and it's celebrated in over 200 countries around the world. And so Yumi and Kristin Allright and I started talking at the end of last year, and you're going to hear how she made her mark with this basic fabulous book.
Thank you for having us here. We appreciate it. I am so grateful for all the interest in the book. And just like Andrea said, it's a wonderful story, and I think it connects with so many people on so many different levels. So at the Hills, what we did is all students, kindergarten through fourth grade, got the opportunity to make their mark and see where it took them. So they all made a dot. So there was over 700 dots displayed on the wall made by all of our students who attended our class on that very first day. They did an amazing job. And then when we put all the dots together, it just really speaks to the beauty of collaboration and the essence of community building in our school. You might notice the smiley faces that are mixed in with the dots. So that was done in support of our school theme this year. So at the Hills, we're doing a theme called Happy, which is Have a Positive Productive Year. So each smiley face has the name of the class that created the dot in that color. So each dot is dipped in a different color on a different day, so that helps the students be able to find which dot there is when they're all hanging together. So I just want to thank our students for doing an amazing job and for Andrea's dedication and promotion of the book. And for the school for inviting us in and realizing its significance. It's a true testament to the power of art, literature, and collaboration.
So before we turn it over to questions, now, when I, early in the school year, I know you, you know, I saw the character on the left, and I didn't know what it was, but I recognized right away. Incredible. My wife is a first-grade teacher, so she explained everything to me, and the significance of the book. But then to come back and see that the whole school was involved, it's just amazing. Because I wasn't sure what was coming. We're so appreciative. I know Dr. Woodard has one slide to share about the positive impact this has had on the greater community, and then we'd certainly like to welcome the board to ask any questions as well, so.
So if we would move forward, I guess, social media, you know, the power of communication, collaboration, sharing of ideas, it's really remarkable when you take a look at the Facebook account and the posting that we did highlighting this work at Wyman's Hills Elementary Center. There were 33,743 reactions to the post. So that means, you know, a smiley face or a heart or, you know, somehow somebody making a connection to what was posted. There were 64,224 clicks. So the number of clicks includes the posts, the links, the images, the videos by one user. So it actually takes you away from Facebook. So again, just as the lady said, this is a global effort, and so you can see the power of that in the number of clicks and the impressions. That's the number of people who saw the post. Now, like me, I clicked on it several times. So it might be somebody like me who clicked on it several times with over 3 million impressions. 1,439 comments. I mean, we're grateful for sometimes eight or 10 comments, you know? So we are now into the over 1,000 comments. That's really incredible to this piece, to this post. And then over 4,500 people shared it. So I think that's a testament to our community and how proud we are of the work that is done in our schools and that we want to share it with our family and our friends. And other folks who recognize Dot Day in their schools are sharing, and it just grows and grows and grows. So, you know, there's a lot of challenges that go along with social media, but there's certainly a lot of positives, too. I think this is an example of how great work and positivity can be spread.
More questions? Comments?
I just want to say one thing. After having a building that was so sterile for the last two years, when I saw this on social media, I have to say it took my breath away. It was just so, it's just so beautiful. So it's so, I can only imagine if I had that kind of reaction. Did you get it all up overnight, or did you do it in progression? Were the kids surprised when they came in and saw the whole thing at once?
Yes. So I took, every day, they did a different colored dot. So we did a different colored dot with every day, and I collected them. I laminated them in sections. And then over the weekend, when, I guess it was our holiday weekend, it was an extended weekend, so I came in and I worked on getting them all up on the wall. So it was done and ready for when the students came back in. And I, and I do have to say, as nice as it is to have that many views, the real joy, right, is when you see the kids walk down the hall and they're looking for their work. And they don't get bored of it. Like, they still are coming in, and they're still engaged in looking at this.
Great job. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. Thanks for sharing your evening with us and your holiday weekend. And that's just really special. Thanks for caring about our students enough to give all this effort to it, so thank you.
Now, will this stay? Is this permanent?
I am hoping that it will last through the school year. You never know with the single block walls how well things will stay up. And it's also a heavily used wall, because this is right outside the art room, so the kids line up at the end of the day with their backpacks. But so far, it's still in really great shape, so it's just great.
I love this. This could be used in so many ways. I'm thinking of our mental health initiative, like, each student may just be a dot, but look at the impact they all have when they make together. A teacher could be a dot, and look what they create in their school community. Like, I, I love this. I think this is amazing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of, I know, I think with Mrs. Taylor's comment leads well into Dr. Lengel, who, you know, as you know, has been here a couple times in the fall. But tonight is more of a comprehensive update on this, on the Mental Health Action Plan, which is part of the board's strategic plan. If you recall, I believe it was in March of last year, Dr. Lengel kind of unveiled the plan. It's a lengthy plan. There's a lot in it. There's a lot of hard work. It's going to take multiple years. But tonight is kind of our first glimpse of an update, and I know Dr. Lengel will be back periodically, you know, through the year to give additional updates. So we'll turn it over to Dr. Lengel.
Thank you. So following that presentation, I'm glad that I have a lot of highlights to share with you all, because that's a tough one to follow. I always come to you, starting with just a background, to remind everybody of how we got to where we are today. So the strategic plan initiated this work. We spent '22, '23 last year really identifying our district needs. This year, we're starting our work. I'm excited to be here already in October. Not a whole lot happened over the summer. There was some planning and, you know, some connections with some outside agencies and sites, but really, once we came back in August, the entire team has really hit the ground running, and there's a lot to update you on tonight. And then next year, we'll be looking at full implementation of this action plan. However, when we, when I get to the end of this presentation, I'll talk about how we hope to build upon this action plan and keep it going for, you know, beyond '24, '25. We had multiple task force meetings last year, and then we also had the opportunity for individual and group written input from some of our task force members. What we saw when we brought the group together, the task force is comprised of about 30 people. We had some people who didn't really, they weren't comfortable sharing in that big environment. So when we had the opportunity for the written input to be submitted, that was when we really were able to hear from everybody involved. Last March, like Mr. Scoboria had shared, is when the action plan was officially developed and set out for the next two years of work. And then at the end there, I just have a quick reminder, while I am sort of leading all of these goals, we, I couldn't do any of it alone. So who we're looking at involved here, Mrs. Taylor has participated with us, and then also Mrs. Renza and Mrs. Waxler participated with Dr. Aras for some of those stakeholder group meetings. We've had administrators, school counselors, our social worker, nurses, parents, teachers, support staff, local physicians, and then we have many community agencies who have been helping to support this work. So the way that I organized it tonight for everybody is I have highlights and next steps under all of the kind of different subcategories that we came up as areas of, not necessarily improvement, but just areas where we're focusing our work in. So under Mental Health Stigma, we are rebranding our ESAP. This has already happened. I really thought that this was going to take our elementary staff a little bit longer into the year, but like I said, they returned in August, and Mrs. Schloppich, who is our ESAP coordinator, she's also one of our school psychologists, developed subcommittees immediately, and they have run with it. So we have a new logo, a new parent referral form, member door signage and building signage that's all being currently printed, and you'll start to see that around the Hills. It's a very soft logo and just more inviting. So we're trying to ensure that parents and staff know and understand that SAP is not just appropriate when there's a problem, when there's a crisis. SAP can be very preventative, and we need to start looking at how we're referring students to that program to ensure that we're using it as a preventative measure, not just a, you know, reactive measure. The Community Wide Kindness Campaign, those are our yard signs that we're seeing pop up everywhere. That was me working with the library. Colleen's stamp has been pretty incredible. We finalized the funding this summer and started sales, and then about two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago now, the Red Eagle did contact us and ran a story on it. And so now we're really seeing them moving us. I will share just briefly, Mr. Scoboria knows I struggle to say the excitement of this, but I'm really excited about it. Just the other night, I got an email from somebody that, I had to kind of, you know, Facebook search how I might know this person, because it wasn't a parent, it wasn't someone that I'm connected with in the school. It turns out I knew her years ago and very briefly, just passed her at the gym, and she wrote me a lovely email about these signs and what they've done for her and her family. So hearing those stories, and, you know, initially, we had said if it just helps one person, it's worth it. It's helping a significant amount of people, so. Kindergarten and first grade, first grade, we do have brain breaks established. That's through the My Time SEL program. I know Dr. Woodard has shared some of that information with you all, but that is a program that you'll see under next steps. We are intending to move that to grades two through four, starting this winter with additional training. And then again, under next step, my favorite one, and Mr. Scoboria asked me to ensure that I really explain this one clearly. We are working on newsletters and what we're calling a Potty PD. So if any of you have been in any of our staff bathrooms, we have a lot of kind of funny memes hanging there about, you know, working in tools and, you know, plugging through our day. Well, we're using that as an opportunity to really hit those high-traffic areas and make sure that our staff know, again, that SAP is preventative, not just a response to a crisis situation or a student with significant needs. So we're trying to make them funny and entertaining, but whenever you're in one of the buildings, use those staff bathrooms just so you can see what we're doing. And then the Kindness Campaign, under those yard signs, as we are having more and more of them sell, Colleen from the Wyman's Hills Library and I are starting to work on what kind of resources are we looking to purchase. So our goal really is to get some consumable materials for the library, for parents to access, community members to access, and then the school for students to access. So whether that be, you know, a journaling workbook that people can pick up and take with them, and it's theirs, or it's pamphlets for parents to learn more about mental health services and supports for their students. Good, thank you. The next area is parental knowledge of age-appropriate behaviors. So the highlights are our task funny memes hanging there about, you know, working in tools and, you know, plugging through our day. Well, we're using that as an opportunity to really hit those high traffic areas and make sure that our staff know, again, that SAP is preventative, not just a response to a crisis situation or a student with significant needs. So we're trying to make them funny and entertaining, but whenever you're in one of the buildings, use those staff bathrooms just so you can see what we're doing. And then the kindness campaign under those yard signs, as we are having more and more of them sell, Colleen from the Wyman's Library and I are starting to work on what kind of resources are we looking to purchase. So our goal really is to get some consumable materials for the library, for parents to access, community members to access, and then the school for students to access. So whether that be, you know, a journaling workbook that people can pick up and take with them and it's theirs, or it's pamphlets for parents to learn more about mental health services and supports for their students. The next area is parental knowledge of age-appropriate behaviors. So the highlights are, our task force was able to weigh in on this year's upcoming Cook Center trainings. I have them listed up there for you. Dr. Woodard already has them scheduled. I think there was a really nice infographic that made it out on the social media. And we've already had the first of those sessions this year.
I'm sorry? We have one coming up. We'll stay there.
A quick reminder, but are those sessions then available for somebody to watch after that?
We can get the link and host to our website under the mental health resources.
Next steps are working with COCA, which is the Council on Chemical Abuse. We are hoping to run a strengthening families program this winter. It's a pretty phenomenal program because it's highly, highly incentivized. So the, the, the real positive of us hosting is our families will have first dibs on attending. It will be open to the entire county, but we will be able to get our Wyman's Library in there first. Again, the incentive, incentivization is they are given meals. So what happens is the family comes with the child and the first part of it is a family meal. So you learn how to sit at a table and talk without maybe a cell phone or other distractions. And then students go to one area, families go to another area, both receive some type of instruction, for lack of a better phrase, on their role. And then they come back together and talk about it. So one, they get a really great meal, but two, they also run related to attendance. You can get different grocery store or gas gift cards. Sometimes if it's before a holiday, they'll run, you know, Five Below gift cards, different things like that. So they typically have a very high attendance rate. We are running our teams and technology program for grades five through eight. That's for students in grades five through eight. And then for parents, we're opening it up K to eight. I believe that actually came as a recommendation from some of you folks last year when I presented on it, to just go a little bit further than just five through eight because we're seeing the technology usage in so many of our number of learners.
And that's a package program, like it's a curriculum that we hired from somebody else?
Correct. It was, it will be run for us for free through COCA and/or Karen. They sort of tag team it depending on who's presenting it and how we end up running it. So we can do it with individual classes. We can do a larger assembly. We're still working out those details, but that'll be coming this year. And then we are working with Empowerment Behavioral Health to run free for our families, in-person parent training related to student mental health needs. We're going to try to run them at the empowerment facility. Again, the purpose being, you know, you're not showing up on school grounds and trying to work on some of that stigma with getting some of our families to come in and learn about, you know, what are age-appropriate behaviors related to mental health? And what are some signs that maybe it's not quite age-appropriate and we need to be looking at some additional services? Bullying and depression and suicide. So the highlights here are our school counseling, junior, senior high school counseling department specifically, did a lot of work this summer with district administration. They came to one of our admin meetings and then came to the big admin meeting that we kind of call our retreat, where we really do a lot of hard work. And we've updated that manual. And we've made it so that, if you recall the Palmer Candy tragedy, we've made it that it can be used for any type of kind of community crisis situation. We now have a manual to go to that gives us step-by-step responses and we know who here are our point people in those moments. We've had multiple staff members attend Prepare Trainings, which is offered by NASS, which is the International Association of School Psychologists. That's the newer of the trainings related to any type of suicide prevention, suicide response, and also just the death of a student and/or staff member. And then I participated in a flight team training that's solely for administrators. So it was very much 500-foot level, but it's, it's kind of learning from others' mistakes. So I found that to be very valuable and I have actually, I have access to it online still and I received a ton of manuals and things. So ideally, we never have a crisis like that, but if we do, we really have a lot of materials now that are right here, you know, at our fingertips. And then our junior, senior high staff has provided written procedures for supporting students in crisis during the day, along with documentation to protect and support our teachers. So if I am a math teacher and a student comes to me really, really in a significant crisis, I have a document right there in front of me of what questions I'm supposed to ask, what am I supposed to write down, and what am I supposed to do? So I don't, I can still be thinking about my math lesson and making sure my other kids are safe and I have a step-by-step procedure right there in front of me. And then next steps for this area is we are developing a new training plan for all staff related to suicide prevention. Act 71 requires us to provide suicide prevention training to all staff here. And we have been doing that. However, the state is coming out with some new resources for us, so we're hoping to update it and then get that training out again to staff. And then we've had the Hope Squad at our junior, senior high school and we are looking at the potential of trying to expand it down to our 56 building. Some schools have Hope Squad a little lower in a middle school or the Needham Club lower in a middle school. We haven't made that jump yet, but that's something that we'll look at throughout this year. Stress and pressure. So I have applied for participation in the Penn State Health School Mental Health Screening Grant. We should find out in November, ideally, if we have been approved for that. If we're approved for that, that's going to be a significant resource for us. It will all be free for the district and we will have supports from Penn State Health to roll it out over the next two years. A lot of training, all research validated. We would receive all of the screening materials and they would be ours after the, after the two-year training plan. And then we would be part of a bigger group who is looking at that screening data and determining what interventions are needed to respond to it. I have worked with our school counseling department chair, Mrs. Quinlin, to develop a timeline for implementing the ESPERT. The ESPERT is a screening tool that is supported by the Karen Foundation and they sort of will descend upon our school and support us with the training and also the administration of the screening. It's a quick screening. It's only about 10 minutes. It's also free. Most districts that do it, do it in the very beginning of the year, which is why we are using this year to develop a plan to then screen next year. That one, we're looking at either seventh or eighth grade. It would be a one-on-one FaceTime with every seventh or eighth grader for about seven to 10 minutes. And from that, we are screening for significant issues and able to right away intervene. Mrs. Quinlin was pretty excited about it and there's a lot of, because other districts have been doing it and Karen has been supporting them, they're able to kind of give us all of our options for administering and implementing and responding. So a lot of that legwork is already done for us. We did receive the outline of the comprehensive K-12 mental health curriculum for, from Dr. Aras. So you'll see then, under next steps, what we have to do now is take what we already have outlined as a K-12 SEL curriculum and start interspersing that where it's appropriate for Wyman's, based on what we already do and based on areas where maybe we're not seeing some of those skills spiral. That's kind of the real key to Dr. Aras's recommendations regarding a curriculum, is that they can't hear it once. They need to hear it again and again and again with age-appropriate language. I talked about, we, next steps will also include providing training for the ESPERT administration. Again, Karen will do that for us for free. And then the last one on there is ensuring appropriate interventions are in place to respond to screening data. So again, that's hearing what other districts have found. You know, you might only have, if we assess 150 students in a grade level, we might only have five students that we're responding to. But those five students that we're responding to, it's a significant need. So we have to make sure that we have those interventions in place right away. It's not something that we would then wait off.
Ask you a question? So could you go back one, thank you. The mental health screening grant, if you have that? That would be screening in what grades?
Probably ninth grade. So they recommend ninth or 10th grade. Ideally, if we get approved for that, then we would probably do seventh and ninth. So seventh would be the ESPERT and then ninth would be the Penn State.
And that would be kind of like once a year, kind of at the beginning of the year sometime? Have you given any thought to any ways we could check in with our 10, 11, 12 graders kind of throughout the year or in the middle? Those are the, when the heading is stress and pressure, those are the ones I'm wondering. Have we given thought to how we check in with them before they fall apart?
Yes, I don't want to speak for our school counseling department, but I think those are typically the kids that they have more face-to-face time with as they're starting to look at what's next beyond high school. So that's certainly something we can discuss more and make sure that we are seeing them all and, you know, getting to all of them early in the year. I'm not sure exactly when, you know, their junior interviews are and that whole process, but certainly that's something we could delve further into. Poverty. So the highlights in this area are, Weekend Our Program is running again through Helping Harvest. That, again, that's another one of those programs that when I need to know why I do this work, I can pull up emails from people who say things like, "You fed our family this weekend." When you hear it once, you know, you keep plugging away at it. Increased advertisement of our free lunch program. Now, what Mrs. Taylor shared earlier, obviously I had created this before, I need that information. But I know that Mr. Boyer and Mrs. Derek, Mrs., thank you, are, will certainly look at that. And she and I have been talking a lot because there have been some thresholds that we haven't been far off in previous years. You know, you, we get a lot of calls sometimes from families who say, "But I know this district has it free. Why, why don't I have it free?" So we are already working on connecting with individual families to complete that application and doing good work there. However, we know there's a lot more families who could apply, should apply. So if that doesn't come to fruition, that's something that she and I are definitely working on. How can we get more families to complete the application and qualify? Sometimes it's just, you know, supporting them with the actual application. It's not a very friendly application, if anybody has seen it. It's not even easy to read as far as the font to it. So we are looking at ways and we are connecting with some families, specifically families who maybe have a higher lunch, a debt, a higher debt. We're able to connect with them. Sometimes it comes up in other work that we're doing with families, but we just know that there's a lot more out there. Contracting with Empowerment Behavioral Health for more opportunities for parent connection to support in-home needs. That is the most recent contract that I sat in front of you, asking you all to approve. She has started with us from Empowerment and has really, really hit the ground running. I'm shocked at how many families she's already connected with, how many students she's already connected with. And so we're seeing some definite progress there. Her current focus is just based on attendance, but as you know, when we find out a student's not attending school, sometimes it is because of some significant barriers in the home. So she's really coming from an empathetic and therapeutic approach as opposed to you need to just get your kid to school, looking at the why. And then monthly connections with families experiencing housing instability to ensure awareness of community supports. So any of our students who are identified currently as homeless, we are connecting with them every single month. It's actually me. And not questioning their residency, not asking probing questions, but just making sure that if there are things that they need, that they know where to go. There's currently a number of resources related to the holidays, so I'm trying to get that information into their hands, whether it's food, whether it's support with gifts. So again, just a friendly conversation with families is getting those resources in their hands much more easily than sending home a flyer or, you know, lecturing that your child needs to be in school and this is why it's important. Our next steps are, we are looking at further training on trauma and ACEs for school staff. We've done a lot of really good work with that. When Dr. Woodard first brought the Cook Center in, personally, I've been in this district a very long time and I think that was one of the most talked about professional development programs. Staff really responded well to that. Additional advertisement of community support. Again, this is not necessarily an area of improvement, but it can never stop. And the more we can get the information out of it, the better. And then further advertising support for families to complete free and reduced lunch applications.
Can I ask a question along those lines? So what do we do, and maybe this is my own ignorance, but for families who have not completed that, but their kids, to me, school lunch debt seems like an oxymoron. So like, how are we helping people who haven't completed but can't pay?
So if we are certain of a debt, we are, we are contacting them. We are often told though, "I made too much money. I'm not filling that." And we don't necessarily probe further than that. Where we're making the connections with families is, and they're following through them with completing it, is when we're connecting with them for a different purpose. And that happens to come up in the conversation. The Helping Harvest program has been very helpful. We have a lot of families that call us and want it, but if you do not qualify for free lunch, technically, you cannot sign up for it. Now, we do not turn anybody away, but we use that as an opportunity to say, "Hey, we can get this for you. Let's get this application filled out." Go ahead, Ms. Warren. Lack of access to mental health providers and resources. This is, you can see, there's a whole lot of highlights there. So we have reorganized our K-12 social work and related services. That's beginning late this month. And that is one that you will see the new job description on tonight's agenda for approval. We have Mrs. LaScala from the Center for Mental Health, who's been just phenomenal for our district. She's been here, I actually think she's been here maybe longer than me. I remember her when I was a teacher at the Hills and she and I worked very closely together. We are really trying to build a K-12 fluid program where we are supporting families and supporting students there. I assume the homeless liaison duties in July of this year. That, why that has been good is it's taken that duty off of one of our junior, senior high counselors. So she now has all of that time opened up and I'm looking at it from more of a K-12 kind of eye on it. We've agreed to participate in the pilot for the virtual outpatient DNA counseling. That's through Karen. We talked about that before and that MOU is on the agenda this evening as well. That is where students will be able to receive their outpatient virtual counseling physically here in our school. The only thing that it is costing us is the room. So we have a Karen personnel member who is not on her Wyman's paid time, who is here. It's students from all over the county that are participating and who they're trying to really target are students who struggle to get to a counseling appointment at 6:00 PM, whether it's transportation or it's other responsibilities in the home or a job. And then also, those students who participate in athletics and other after-school activities who don't want to make the counseling a priority over continuing some of those things. That will start in November, assuming that that MOU is approved. And then I would certainly keep you all updated as to how many students we are participating, how that's going. And then last but not least, as a real highlight, we have significantly increased our number of students participating in school-based counseling. So if you recall, it was not last spring, but the spring before, we brought in, we partnered with Empowerment Behavioral Health. We had to apply through the county to get approved as, working with them as a provider. And we were slow to get started simply because we had to spread the word. We had one counselor working with us initially in all three buildings. We are now up to two counselors. They are here nearly full-time and that's their caseload currently. So the ones that you see in the intake process are all students who are just about ready to start their programming. We probably have about 15 others that have been referred already this year and we're just starting the intake process. And then next steps for this area is to continue to promote school-based counseling. I think everybody here can't say enough about it. The kids who are going like it, they do not argue us. We have families that are incredibly, incredibly appreciative for it being during the kids' school day. And Empowerment has been phenomenal at making sure that they're working around student schedules. So you're not getting pulled from math class every single time you're being called there. And if you have a math test today and you have the pass for period three, you're able to go and say, "I'm sorry, Ms. Warren, can I come back another period?" And she's working with everybody's schedule to make that happen. We've even had some students being seen at the end of the day so that they can just take the late bus. And then, oh, I'm sorry. There's one more on there. And then utilizing our mental health task force to determine what areas we need additional data. That was, and I talked very briefly about one of the recommendations from Dr. Aras being that we need to make sure being that we need to make sure that we are looking at data for all of our decision-making as opposed to, I shouldn't say as opposed to, because we do look at data, but what other areas do we need to pull data from, whether it be informal data or an actual survey? How can we get additional data to be looking at what our student needs, staff needs, family needs? And then that brings me to our agenda for this upcoming year. So we're going to bring the task force back together. We have a few other, either agency representatives that we would like to invite and/or some other personnel who have reached out here who feel that they could really be supportive of all of these goals that we've developed. So our group would review the input from our stakeholder group meetings that was provided to Dr. Aras and then consider all of her recommendations. She did give us a pretty lengthy report with a number of recommendations, many of which are proactive approaches. I think that really, and I think for anybody who was in the stakeholder group meetings, the, the real theme to them was, "We're doing really good stuff when there's problems." We really are responding to student need and family need and staff need. Where we can continue to grow is trying to be a little bit more proactive to hopefully avoid some of those problems down the road. Like I said, we would determine additional areas of data collection that we could use from staff and families. We would review our 2022, 23 ESAP and SAC data. Our SAC data just skyrocketed last year. The number of cases coming through, the level of need, the number of placements that came out of SAC assessments, it was huge. And Karen does a phenomenal job for us of creating a very basic infographic that gives us that data, but then we're able to break that down even more as to, you know, what we were seeing here. So I think that that's going to be a real talking point for our group. We would discuss new initiatives related to student attendance, specifically related to that Empowerment Behavioral Health support. Again, she's really hit the ground running. She's met with community trainers related to student attendance and really trying to increase the program, our ESAP program, or ESAP, I'm sorry. Staff members are also looking at how they can better support that. So something as simple as they're trying to get a QR code that potentially would be on a magnet on your fridge at home. When Johnny is absent, you are scanning that and putting your note right through. That makes it an excused absence. So we're looking at how can we make life easier for everybody involved, but most specifically our families and our kids to get that data. Evaluate our pays data, so at the end of this spring, we should have all of our pays data, including that from the fourth grade pilot. So again, that group will spend a whole lot of time, that's that cute report we get, it's usually over 100 pages. And we really dove into that data last year and I anticipate we'll do the same this year. And then update our action plan based on additional data review so that it can continue beyond the 24, 25 year. I think that's it, Mr. Aras?
Yep.
Questions? Some good work. Some good stuff.
Really good.
Really amazing.
And great to see those school-based counseling numbers. That's so huge, to make that accessible for those kids. Can you remind us, I'm embarrassed to ask this question, who's on the mental health task force?
Sure. So from the school board, it's been Mrs. Taylor has been involved. All of our high school and elementary school counselors have been invited, whether they attended every meeting or not, I don't know that off the top of my head. Our school nurses were all invited and our school psychologists were all invited. At least one administrator from every school building has been participating. Mr. Scabori has been there, Dr. Blurt has been there. We have a few teachers, a mix of special education and general education. I'm usually better at recruiting the special ed teachers. We have a few support staff members. That attendance probably wasn't as high as maybe it would be if I, you know, went to some of my special ed power professionals, tried to get those folks in there. We have Coca, Karen, the library, Tower Health, we have multiple physicians that have participated, multiple parents. So, and some people have dual roles. I think that might be about it. We had a few people reach out with requests to either be added or to add, you know, their friend down the street or somebody. And because our attendance, our first few meetings were really high attended and then it kind of dropped off. So I think moving forward, assuming that we can fit, this is where we hold them, we probably will, will welcome the new.
How often do we?
So last year, we didn't, we met, no quote me, but July, September, October, November. And then we had, we had one scheduled for December and it was the holidays, I think. And so we had nobody that was able to attend, so that's when we did the written input option. And then following that, we had a ton of like subcommittee groups to actually develop the mental health action plan. So this year, I anticipate, and I've been touching base with a couple of people to say, "Do we try to pull a November or a December?" I actually don't think that we should. I think we should probably go for January. Last year, we had also talked about, "Do we try to do virtual?" And it's just so difficult with, one, that many people, but, two, the topics. You know, some of our pays data, as an example, is really, really heavy stuff to be looking at and talking about. So it's just better when you can read others in your group and, you know, make sure that everybody's comfortable.
Just to piggyback and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Lingle, but I know there's scheduled meetings and then certainly there'll be some. I think when the Palmer tragedy took place, not everybody in the group could get together, but I think Dr. Lingle tried to virtually gather some members of that team to kind of process through, you know, some of what was occurring, what we do and what we're trying to do. So it's also a group that can be called together should we have a community or school issue. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's how he approached it last year.
Dr. Lingle, I know we spoke about this before. Trying to find some way to capture data on our, our littlest murders, our kindergarten through fourth graders, there's not a lot of tools out there to rate emotions, family issues, things like that. But I, we have a lot of great options available for our families, but I think a lot of times it, it is a little more reactive. And then looking back, you're like, "Oh yeah, this childhood problem starting in kindergarten, they continued throughout." So I think Dr. Aras had recommended finding some way to get more into the elementary kiddos.
It's specifically, it's teaching them the language for them to be able to self-report. It's hard for a kiddo to say, "I'm feeling X," when they don't even have that word to use. So it's teaching, one of her recommendations is, you know, some type of scale. Like when you go to the hospital and you rate with the smiley faces, similar to that, but that our kids, our staff, our families would all be using the same language. So when Johnny says, "I'm a five," or "I'm in the yellow," or whatever the praise may be, that everybody understands what that means. And I think pays, I mean, they moved it down to fourth grade. The goal really is that, I think they're eventually hoping to be as low as second grade. So, and the questions in there are, will give us a lot of data to be able to look at and kind of break down related to our fourth graders.
But we don't use pays to individually screen, right? We're just getting like a group, looking at trends as a group.
Yeah, I will say.
They're talking about, Terry, like more screening, like more of an idea that you would identify particular students that were having particular difficulty.
Yes, yeah. And that's tricky, again, because they don't have the language. They may not be able to identify, but working in an elementary school, kids will drop tidbits all the time without realizing it, like, "Oh, my daddy left and I have a new daddy." And, you know, then you know that there's changes in the household and then that's where the counselor or social worker can reach out and see what's going on. But if there was something global, even if it was just, you know, color of your smiley face in morning SEL lessons, and then consistently see, okay, this kid, the last 30 days, had 18 yellow and five red days, something's going on. So, yeah, that's, does that make more sense? But this is fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, fantastic work. Thank you, that's something to your team and all the people out there that care about these kids. Do all those.
You see with tonight's agenda, and I think the board saw some agenda items the last couple of months. So there'll be consistently items coming through the board. And then we'll probably look this spring, maybe another six months or so, to make sure a couple of times a year, we're having kind of large-scale updates. So Dr. Lingle will be coming back periodically to update the board on the project.
Can I just ask one quick question? I know I asked this with Melissa a few years ago when we did these mental health series. Are they being loaded back up onto the website again?
Yep, they're on there.
And how, where do we find them again? I know, like, I'm trying, I know when I'm looking on my laptop how to find it, but the phone is totally different. So I did have a parent that did reach out to me. So it's, they're back up again?
They, they are up there under, when you go to the yioarea.org page, if you click on, if you scroll about halfway down underneath the red banner, there's a spot that says "Mental Health Resources." Now, if you click on that, they'll all be listed there.
The labels.
Yeah, and also the sign, the registrations for the upcoming ones are also there.
Is there a possibility of, like, on a regular basis, putting out on social media, "Hey, here's a reminder that these nine topics are available here through link," you know, I don't know if you could do a link, but just to, like, just seeing the topics listed. Remember, oh yeah, maybe now I'm having that problem, I wasn't having that problem a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I think, I know Ms. Tierney tries to get the upcoming ones, you know, a couple of reminders, but I think it is handy maybe for us to drag people over to this site to see where the library of them would be. So I'm sure I can talk to her and work with Mr. Arns as well with that info out there.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Lingle and everybody on your team, you know, contributing. Shifting gears a little bit, our third and final report tonight, then we'll get to our action items. As you know, Mr. Captain Sully, really, I believe the board leadership put this in maybe the second half of last year, about every month, he's been coming back and giving an update on construction. Obviously, a year ago or so, there were more. So he was here in August, he was here in September, and tonight is our second October meeting. So, Mr. Captain Sully, I'll turn it over to you for a construction update.
Thank you, Mr. Scabori. I'm going to start at the high school. Some exciting news at the high school. We are officially complete over here from a punch list and really based in perspective. So they completed the wayfinding signage and also the punch list, I believe, over the last holiday break. So now I'm working with the architect and we're finalizing the final pay application with Yuri. That's kind of the final step. There is some pending credits. We're also making sure all the allowances are in order. And we want to get their final payout out to them and get that through the board as soon as possible. And then we will be done with West Running, now we'll be done with the high school, and then we'll just have the Hills to wrap up. So, any questions on high school?
Congratulations, Mr. Captain Sully.
Well, two out of three.
Sorry, progress.
The wayfinder signage that, all of a sudden, they were up, I'm like, "These are pretty great." Yeah, they really are helpful.
I've received some positive feedback. I know I've found many lost parents trying to find the field hockey field or auditorium, so that's great. So, Mr. Arns, on cue, and we can go to the next one. All right, now we'll talk about the Hills. Sorry. So over the last couple of weeks, we've had some progress. The cafeteria, if anybody's been to the cafeteria, we've installed the automatic shades that now allow, there's one that's translucent and there's one that's blackout shades for presentation. They're installed, fully operational, Dr. Reiki's been using them. On Columbus Day, site cleanup, grading and seeding has occurred all around the perimeter of the building. We're hoping for some nice, cool nights for some growth in October and November. Seal coating happened last week as well, off-hours down by loading dock. And some fencing was installed around both retention ponds, the outdoor laundry area, the autistic sport playground. And we are waiting on one additional fence, which is around the dumpsters in the front of the building. So I hope to have that soon.
That fence that's planned around the dumpsters, is it, does it hide the ugliness of the dumpsters?
It does, it does. So it's about eight-foot chain link with vinyl slats in it for privacy.
I hear your mind. I went in the other day and I was like, "Who would have designed this with no fence?"
Looking to try to get that.
Yes. So, top left corner is the two retention ponds. Top right is your autistic playground. And then in the middle, there is some repair work that was done over the holiday break to help with drainage. We had some ponding in the bus loop that needed to be moved to that inlet. That was all a punchless item and also not charged to the district. They had to fix what they put in.
And not to be too aesthetic here, but does that ever get like all blacked out so it looks attractive?
It will start blending.
It will start blending? So they answer, "No."
Not in this project. I guess we couldn't, I know it'd be more money, but a top coat could be applied at a future date to kind of.
Part of the, part of my preventative maintenance program, we'll be doing a seal coating in the next few years. But what I'm saying is that, that was taken like that day. So it will start to fade, like, like the rest of the bus. Okay, any other questions on this?
The fence looks very nice around the ponds and the pride. I had to drop my son off last weekend, next time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Next slide, please. All right, here are the outstanding items. So around the parent pickup loop, we have some more seal coating to do. We've tried the last couple of Saturdays, as you guys have known, it's been a little wet. So we're going to get that scheduled maybe this Saturday, but I have to confirm that. The last big items for our general contractor are the fencing around the dumpster enclosure, the flag hole, and remaining punchless items. I spoke to Parata and I don't have a date for the fencing or the dumpster enclosure yet. Or, no, the dumpster closure or the flag hole yet. But he did reach out and say, "Over Thanksgiving break, they would like to go in the building and take care of the majority, if not all, of the punchless items during the break that are inside the building." So that is the tender plan at this point. And as we all know, the BCT flooring will be installed starting second of June-ish and then July. So those are the major outstanding items. Once those items are completed, we're expecting them to submit some pay applications, also some pending credits, and one, maybe two change orders that we still have to work through. But as of right now, they are working and we are still waiting on those pay applications up at this point.
And the labor for the BCT flooring is question mark? Like, as of now, it would be the general to complete it?
Correct.
But we could also potentially discuss covering that with somebody else?
Sure.
Like, when you say June 2nd, it's not like there's labor lined up to do it?
Oh, there is.
It's the general?
They're on schedule.
It's the sub through the general?
Exactly, solar flooring, and they are scheduled for whatever, the last teacher day, the next day. They're scheduled to come in and start.
Okay, through the, and we have to rely on the, but we're contracted with the con, with the general to do it, right? Like, we don't have privy with the sub, we don't, we can't boss around the sub. They're not working for us, they're working for the general who's still.
They're not, but indirectly, you know, they report to us.
And you feel confident that they have the commitment to the labor starting at the beginning of June?
I do, I do.
And are they the same guys that installed it before?
They're the same company. We've requested that, it's a very different group.
And you feel confident that the quality of the labor would be better than the quality of the labor previously?
I feel confident if they have ample time and the correct conditions to install BCT flooring, that it will be a much better product. And they will, this year.
So you think the problem before was that it was rushed and it was dirty and then therefore the dirt showed up underneath as little bumps when you're politely saying the conditions? Does that what you mean?
It was rushed. It was not the ideal conditions from a climate perspective and also there were several other contractors trying to finish up their work. And yes, it was not ideal to lay flooring properly.
But the, but you feel confident in the owners of the company or at least the supervisors or the foremen would ensure a better product? would ensure a better product, probably?
Yes. Any questions on the Hills?
Other than the fencing and the flag hole, how extensive is the punchless item? Like, that can get done over Thanksgiving break or?
So we, if they hit it with the correct manpower, I feel confident they could get it done or pretty close. They've, we started out with 20-some pages and we cut that in half. And now we're just going to get the, enough time to get into those rooms and the proper amount of manpower. That's been, that's been a struggle throughout this whole process. Okay. All right. Let me turn it over to Mr. Boyer.
Thanks, Mr. Capinselli. We've been through this slide before. The only real change to this is that on tonight's agenda, there is a change order for $2,400. So that third line down, if you look going top to bottom, plus projected seals over budget, it's $2,400 increase from the last time we reviewed it. So the revised budget is $25 million, 219,000. But as we went through many times, there are, there is that financing fees line that's not needed that the architect budgeted as part of the 24 million original budget at $526,000. So the estimated total spend on the project, all in, is $24,693 with the change orders. Any questions on this? So just going through here, once again, the change orders for the junior senior high school. So that amount changed by $2,400 for the approved change orders. Definitely pending approval tonight. We didn't make the assumption it wouldn't be approved. So the balance over budget for the junior senior high school, just on change orders, that budget line, that's the top line. They're working left to right. Like, the $400,000 for the junior senior high school is the amount budgeted by the architect for change orders in the project. So we exceeded that at both junior senior high school and the Hills. $145,000, that's a placeholder that we still have for some of the outstanding work. It should not be that amount. It should be less than that, but we're just holding that placeholder right now due to the architect and Mr. Capinselli working through those last remaining change orders that are out there yet. The great news is that we started to receive some of the 15% omission payments from the engineer. So we're at about $22,000 that we received the past two weeks as payments for, that had 15% that was built into the contract. And that our solicitors built in and reviewed the construction contracts. So if there's any type of omission change that's due to the engineer or architect, 15% of the change order, we can pay back. So we're starting to receive those payments now, which is a huge advantage to us. It's not like 15%, is that a lot of money, but it's still something for those change orders that we're not due to, or we're just omissions from the actual plans that were put out. So good news for us. So we did start receiving payments for those errors.
So over the, you know, we said this last time, and actually it hasn't happened, but over the next 30 days, we do anticipate a couple of things could be, you know, shared, be able to be shared with the board. And, you know, part of the next meeting is, Mr. Capinselli said that URI is kind of settling up. We have some credits, so we believe we have some good news that we hopefully can share with you that would impact some of these numbers. And then there are some items from the Hills that have been sent to our architect room where they're being reviewed. Once they're sent to us, we have 30 days to respond. But we do believe there's some legitimate, you know, payments probably the next 30 days that are still outside of the 5% that the district can hold. So we've been over this a few times with the board. We were expecting some of these to come a couple of months ago. But we do think over the next 30, 60 days that we'll be sharing some information. Again, we get to withhold that 5% through the completion of the project. We will do that. But there's a little bit of funds outside of that that we'll probably be back in front of you to talk about. So probably more to follow. We thought that was occurring over the last 30 days, but there's still, our architect is being very thorough, collecting information from Parata and having him respond to, you know, any requests they have for clarification. So more to come in that area. So really, the last few times you've seen this, it really hasn't been a significant change in any of these numbers in the last probably two, three months that we've been reviewing. Thank you, Mr. Capinselli.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that brings us to the action items. The first area is curriculum and technology. And it is recommended that the board of school directors approve and ratify the following curriculum and technology items. That's numbers one and two.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call Mr. Boyer.
Mrs. Renza?
Yes.
Mr. Hershey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillen?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes six through.
Our next section is finance and facilities. I just want to highlight a couple of items before turning it over to Mrs. Renza. Very fortunate, this community, to have donations. We have some anonymous donations for the Coach Walton dedication. We're processing two donations that we knew about to help us offset the cost of opening day for our staff. And then the Wyoming City Hill Citizens Social Committee, both for the Hills and for West Rattie. And then the remainder of the items were, you know, items that kind of worked through either the finance workshop or somewhat routine to work that the school does each year, the school district does each year. So with that, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve and ratify the following finance and facility items, numbers one through 13.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call Mr. Boyer.
Mr. Hershey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillen?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Renza?
Yes.
Motion passes six through. Okay. The next section is personnel and policy. And as you can see, it covers a number of different areas, you know, many of them somewhat routine. But it is the area also that we get to welcome and appoint new staff. And I would like to point out that we have one of those new staff members here in the audience tonight. He's been here through a long meeting already and appreciate his attendance. We have Hunter Bean in the back of the room who is being recommended as a fourth grade teacher at the Hills. So we'd like to recommend, like, welcome Hunter to the meeting. And with that, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve and ratify the following personnel and policy items as presented, and that's numbers one through 13.
Do I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Bean, I will say, thank you for sitting here through this meeting. I will also say that one of your future colleagues at the Hills stopped me at the grocery store and told me you're the best hire we've made in many years.
Thank you.
We'll call Mr. Boyer.
Mrs. Gillen?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Renza?
Yes.
Mr. Hershey? Motion passes six through.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to be a Spartan going forward. And like I said, I'm a homegrown Spartan, so this has been a dream of mine. And I'm very excited to fulfill that.
We're delighted to have you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Renza. That concludes my report.
Is there, thank you, is there any old business? Any new business? Before we move, does everybody know Mr. Schippers?
Hello.
Thank one or forgot one? Yes. So this is Mrs. Taylor. Did you figure out who the other folks around the table were that you might not know?
Yeah, I know most of them. Nice to see you all.
All right. This is for Hershey and Mr. Schippers. Yep, this is the group. And hopefully we'll see you here in the second.
I hope so.
Any, was that new business that I already said? Any write-to-know requests?
There are several listed here.
All right. Thank you. And any updates from organizations? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Oppose me? Thank you so much. And just hang around for a quick exec.
Very brief.